Anything else?
Anything else? Is there a motion to approve minutes? And I'd like to just have the, we're going to review the four inch building disagreement. I think that's in final form now, so we've done that. We'll just add that.
Well, they have, I'm trying to get that. I said and talk to you guys to make sure that that's the one you guys want.
Okay. There are motions to approve minutes in today's agenda. Tom, thank you. Is there a second? Favor? Any discussion? All in favor is signified by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Can you say anything?
I think Crown, Crown has called them.
Who did?
Crown. Did it Crown or, no, Crown, he had whatever, something on Crown over there. He's been a ditch out for the flooding. This question, they said it probably.
Is that going on the west side of the, how many roads? The drains out of?
Yeah.
Crown up goes north from there?
That goes north, yeah. The water. We keep it on the west side so that those great north. That's where we got big call.
Yeah.
They are doing it along the back street from, on south, you know, I don't know. And all the through the.
Yes, they are. They are doing some ditch cleaning on the, what, the northwest corner?
On the south side of.
Oh, on the south side. Oh, okay. Okay.
Pretty much along there. Right now, they would have kept down from the way it was wired, so.
Which side is it? What side of this street are they on? Are they on the north side of this?
That's what I, they are, you're right. And I don't know, we have that. Down the north side of this street there.
Okay.
And that's where the call was.
Okay.
I would like, and then maybe Jerry said that they could pre.
Both sides. And then cross over. Here's the culprit that comes across that street. The brown spot. You get way down to the east end. That's where we had to make that cut.
Yeah. Way to come out and that's a, like everything on the north side. And then while the fall field was. The ones you got into the deal or.
Probably either they're talking about, you know, the yards. How many feet or yards are they talking about? Us. I suppose right up to their ceiling level.
Yeah.
I don't think they're going to do that where that house is.
Maybe I saw the houses that do that.
I mean, I think they're making about two blocks long.
Nothing. Two, four hours of that. It's really fun.
Yeah.
Probably less than an hour. But they just ask. It's going to be a piece of property.
Right. That's the only outlet that they've got to work with.
So I didn't.
Yeah, I couldn't, that's me in favor of helping them out as long as they're making some effort there to get that. And then, you know, they can do something on the west side and the northwest corner.
Somewhere that's honest, right on the south side. Like you said, bigger, bigger much as well.
Yeah.
They're doing that now or?
They were until.
They're going to go so far and talk about five to six.
Treatment. So you just pull the rear setting on the side of the hall and off or?
Setting sort of off and burning that kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I'm doing on the highways or. Working on that.
Does get nothing out of it, run. They're doing. Not as much as. Just say, does it mean anything where you get people contributing extra money dollars to that situation? Pause with that.
Well, I guess I'd like to see what they're thinking then. Jerry said it's just the thought.
Run that past, but as long as they're making an effort to correct that issue down there, boy.
He said.
It's gonna.
Get better.
Take a wicker where the guy shouldn't have moved. Time on there, he wants to go down and.
Did you recall something like that going through? I saw another bill on that.
I did too.
Is Dylan going to be involved with this conference call?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you're up to speed on what's happening.
He's doing their, kind of the research on it.
Really seeing that.
I've got the chain title and the, chain title on the parcel of land and then the. The, at least the three different leads, or the three different people that have one assessed and it's appropriate.
Okay. I've got that information.
Where's the property located?
You want to give us the whole?
Uh, law is going to call in at nine fifteen, is it? It's lots nineteen twenty and twenty-one of block eighty-eight here in Siskiyou.
Is that right down the street here?
I honestly have no idea. It's the, it's, I think of one going, it was Calvin Max's house.
Okay, what were the lots again?
Nineteen twenty and twenty-one of block eighty-eight.
Over there a bit. No, because that would be thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. I'll bet you it's over here, right across from the basketball.
Very west of the.
Those lots, they're kind of. One through twelve on the inside the alley, thirteen, twenty-four, I think I have.
I.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to fix that one right down there.
I'm still having trouble getting the street names right out.
I think it's where my uncle used to live years ago.
So someone bought the property and they want to have these weeds removed, is that the year?
So, yeah, there's a very complicated chain title. I mean, Calvin Max and a litany of different people, he tried to sell it three different times on a contract for deed. All three contracts for deeds defaulted and then he sold it to a Floyd Waitman. And quit claimed it to him in October, November of twenty twenty, depending on which deed you go by, because they had to correct something. But then after he had sold it, one of the people that he sold, or tried to sell to a contract for deed. Must have defaulted before, I think it was a deed filed. Two and a half weeks ago, disclaiming the interest that that person had on the contract for deed back to Calvin. And there are county liens assessed on the property. For Calvin Max Senior in the amount of fifty dollars. Calvin Max Junior in the amount of hundred and fifty dollars. And Maxine Dumars in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Maxine Dumars was one of the people that attempted to buy a piece of property on a contract for deed. The contract for deed was filed in the register deeds office on April twenty-fifth of two thousand and sixteen. And when someone buys something on a contract for deed and files the notice of that contract for deed, they obtain at that point. Some sort of ownership interest in the property, it's not a full ownership interest, obviously until the contract for deed is completed. But there is at least some ownership interest there, that's why the lien occurred attached to the property. And then obviously with Calvin Max and Calvin Max Junior, those liens attached because Calvin owned the property. And from what I can tell, liens from Junior, he, no, actually. Leans on Junior probably should not have attached because he was above the age of majority. By the time the liens attached to that property, so that hundred and fifty dollars in my opinion probably shouldn't have been attached to the piece of property.
What did you mean by that, above the age of?
Majority, he was above eighteen.
Oh, okay.
Age of majority, sorry.
No, I didn't know what, all that. What difference does that make if it's a lien on the property or not?
Well, if someone's above the age of majority, they're legally an adult. So anything that's assessed against them is assessed against them as an adult person.
Sure.
If they have something assessed against them as a minor, then their parents would also be liable for that, but since he was above eighteen at the time, didn't own the piece of property. That name shouldn't have attached to his dad's piece of property. Yet. So then, in my opinion, the hundred and fifty dollars probably shouldn't have been attached to these three lots. The fifty dollars for Senior and the one thousand one hundred and eighty-five on Maxine Dumars, I think were validly attached. Because county liens can attach to real property. At, to any real property that a person may own at the time or acquire after the liens filed. And then all of the, these two marks of liens were attached between two thousand, or were instituted between two thousand and six and two thousand and thirteen. She took the contract for deed that was, or notice filed on April twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, so she acquired some sort of ownership interest in the property in twenty sixteen. Versus all the liens happening prior to that. And once they attach, liens run with the real property, they don't run with the person. Once they attach the piece of property from there. And whoever would buy the property in the future would have to either pay those off or take a property assumption to.
It's used as property tax, is that the reason the liens were?
Uh, they look like jail liens.
Yeah.
It's the liens from our office.
Yeah. So is this Floyd Waitman asking us to push our claim?
Uh, that's my understanding is he had bought the property from Mr. Max. Was unaware of all the liens, because these aren't the only things, there's some small claims documents and a couple other things attached to the property. But bought it on an oral deal, neither of whom had attorneys. And just bought it and was unaware of all the liens and now is trying to sell it. And wants to try to get some of the liens off.
Is the property that's valued?
I honestly don't know.
Fairland, is it a house or?
I believe it's a house.
In Houston, yes, it was a nice house. I don't know. Since Calvin, I don't know, you know, what point of it, who is it now? No, but.
That's my understanding of the situation.
Okay. Haven't seen the interior, but I'm pretty familiar with the property, it's probably a twenty to thirty thousand dollar house maybe. Sits in a flat lane. Geo liens and. I'll have to see how that group feels about that. In terms of him not having any knowledge of the liens, he bought the property, that's like buyer beware, like that's.
Is that, that's.
It is.
In simple terms, that's the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't feel encouraged to call in to see what he has to say. Martin, you think?
I mean, I don't know any of these people. But it's, I mean, as far as the letter of the law is concerned, they're all, to my knowledge, they're all valid liens and they've all been valid with the tax, so.
With the exception of the.
Except, yeah, except for the, with the exception of the liens and Calvin Max.
We're looking at twelve hundred and thirty-five dollars and take out that one fifty.
Yeah.
Is it fair for us to ask who he wants to sell it to? Because are we going to get in this same thing over again?
You can ask, I don't know if he'll tell you.
To me, the bigger question is if we don't forgive these liens, is he saying he can't sell the property yet?
Well, and to my knowledge, it's not just these, there's other things that he's got, got to try to clear off too, so. I think he's just trying to, in my best guess, take a little bit off at times as he goes along, just trying to go through each. Correct channel for different things.
How long has he owned this?
Uh, to me, from the chain of title, from the register deeds office, either October ninth of two thousand and twenty or November twenty-third of two thousand and twenty. Depending on which, because there was a corrective deed filed in November.
All right.
Good taxes, all figured out?
I didn't check that.
Well, if he discarded in November of two thousand and twenty, wouldn't there be any taxes filed yet?
I'm guessing the date from October of two thousand and twenty would be valid. Only change that they did on the corrective deed from November was they had a misplaced suffix. They just deleted that into the new one.
So his purchase is on another contract, contract for deed with.
I, there isn't a contract for deed filed, so I'm guessing he bought it outright.
Without, apparently without planning, so.
Yeah.
We have to clear it.
He, yeah, title somebody with one thing, it's coming for the usual issue of title insurance.
Good morning. Good morning, who's this?
Good morning, my name is Jessica Thielson. I'm calling in regards to a house that my son purchased.
Okay.
Um, there's some liens and judgments against it. I'm calling to see if some of those could possibly be dropped or lessened to see and trying to sell it.
Okay. We've been briefed a little bit on the, on the history, we have our state's attorney with us, Dylan Kirschmeyer researched it. Uh, he's identified about three liens. Oh. Did you say your last name is Thielson?
Thielson, T-H-I-E-L-S-T-N.
Okay, everybody.
My son, my son's name is Floyd Waitman.
Okay.
He's the one that purchased the house and he's sitting right here as well.
Okay, great. That, as I was saying, identified three, three liens, a fifty dollar lien, a hundred and fifty dollar lien. And one for one thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Yes, that's what I have as well.
Okay. Is, is that all of them that are against the property?
Um, there is one in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. Of cost interest and other amounts that I hold to Barclays Bank in Delaware. And then there's one for two thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents to the same thing.
Okay.
That's all we think about.
Okay.
Um, Floyd, they assessed him all of the house, it's forty thousand dollars for four hundred thousand, sorry. Forty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. He bought the house for thirty-two thousand. Um, we have an interested buyer who will go after it, twelve thousand. So what we're trying to do is see if this connection, my son being held responsible for these things back in order to sell the house.
Sure.
So he's not going to walk away with very much money in his pocket.
Right.
And I understand, you know, I had a report taken down the whole time. I mean, my son's eighteen, so, you know, he's not integrated in a lot of this stuff or did not, you know, know about this stuff. Um, Calvin Max Senior is the owner of it and he claims he didn't know who there's had any lien or judgment on him. So I guess I don't know what we can do about any of that.
Well, if it's any help, we're, we're advised that the hundred and fifty dollar lien could justifiably be forgiven. We, we've, we're going to have to debate the other, the other two.
Well, yeah, I don't know what you can do about the bank judgment. If anything.
Nothing on that, it's not our fault.
Right, right. Of course, the one against Maxine Dumars.
Yeah.
Like she has a doc and her, you know, wages be garnished or. I guess I don't know what the law will be about that one.
Good question, y'all. Probably not.
Sorry?
Now, we have another legal consultant in the room that's shaking or going, no, that's not an option for us.
Okay.
From a civil standpoint, did he go after it or no, or no? Make that a monster.
I'm sorry, hear that again?
I was just asking a question of our, our legal team here. We don't have a civil matter, if your son could go after this Dumars person for those funds or not, I guess I had a lot to ask in question, so. But I think they stated that the county can do that with regard to that.
Oh, the county can do that?
Did your son buy it on a contract from Calvin or how was he able to make that purchase with the, with the liens?
Paying cash.
Pardon me? He was cash. Oh, paying cash, okay. Okay, yeah, that would.
What type of deed did he get?
Quick claim.
What?
I'll do it. If you own super board. Discuss it, we'll be back to him. We, we're not in a position to make a decision right at this point, we're going to have to discuss it. And get, get back beyond that. Jessica. What, what's a good callback number for you, Jessica?
Uh, six oh five.
Okay.
Eight six, sorry, eight six four zero two seven seven.
All right. All right, we'll get back to you before the end of the day on it, Jessica.
All right, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks for calling in.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah.
How do you call one when you do like that?
It's another person. You have anything to add? It's available, the same company.
I don't know enough of the grass. And I've seen her interest in that property.
She had, she had filed a notice of contract for deed.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And all the liens were prior to that contract for deeds they attached when she got the ownership interest.
So the county has. You know, even if you take the house out of, you know, picture, she owes us money, we can't attach her wages or any of that.
Not until you have a judgment.
Okay, but we could file.
You can, you can file and have your state's attorney sue everybody who's got a lien in certain court. And once you get a judgment, then you can use for post judgment. Um, remedies and can then garnish, if there's no other property upon which you can levy. And garnishment is like the very last thing that you can do.
And touching into real property is one of the first. The problem now is obviously the fact that she doesn't have that interest in the property anymore. But she did.
I mean, at this point, it's just really up to you guys on what you're wanting to do as far as that twelve hundred and thirty-five dollars. I guess I don't think, in my opinion, the mind of the state is, that shouldn't have been placed anywhere.
I guess we can look for a gathering, general agreement to write off the hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, you're talking writing off, what, what are you talking?
Whatever, whatever ramifications that give the one.
Or can we do the, or can we do the partial release to that property like we've done in the past? We're not writing it off, Calvin's still holding it, correct?
Calvin Junior, yeah, he still owes that hundred and fifty.
Well.
Well, we're only talking about the hundred and fifty dollar lien on Calvin Max Junior.
Oh, that, okay, I just.
This one, he made his last claim in February of eighteen and has still got a hundred and fifty dollar balance. And I, in my opinion, this one wasn't validly attached to the piece of property that we're talking about here. Because he was over the age of eighteen at that time, had no ownership interest in the property. So it shouldn't have been, had any to his dad's property.
Correct.
So you got to release that property as to that.
As to that, as to that.
Then we asked for that property.
Yeah.
He'll still hold it. Okay, will be attached to that property.
Just the hundred and fifty you're talking about right now?
Yeah. And then the other two, it's the fifty dollar lien on Calvin Max Senior. And the eleven hundred and eighty-five dollar lien, Maxine Dumars, that are attached to that piece of property.
I hate to sound caliph, I don't really see what's our problem. The guy made a poor business decision, he paid thirty-two thousand dollars cash for a piece of property, now he can sell it for twelve thousand dollars. He's got fifty-seven hundred dollars owed to two banks, which I doubt they're going to relinquish it. Our little twelve hundred and thirty-five is.
That's very bad.
A little bit of that there, that's the, yeah, we'll leave the hundred and fifty, who's on the hook for the rest of it. He can still, it's not like it's going to prevent him from selling property, so he's put less money into pockets.
I mean, he can use the proceeds of him selling now, the means for the potential buyer could agree to take, to buy the land subject to those in place of cheaper stuff.
I wonder who those liens are, whose names are in it? His name, I mean, did he?
What point in?
The twenty-nine and the twenty-seven hundred.
Uh, with the bank, it could be, honestly, it could be any of the people that had an ownership interest in the land at any point in time. I, I have one, two, three.
The registered deeds would go back, we could prove five somebody, I'm just curious.
Well, I mean, what I gathered, Jay gave me the whole. Well, I mean, what I gathered, uh, Jay gave me the whole chain title for the property.
Yeah.
And he didn't have any, unless he just didn't give them to me because they weren't relevant to this situation. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people that have an ownership interest in this piece of property, they act back to, uh,
I think.
Two thousand and six, so who knows who those are against.
Anybody else have any comments? I would be in favor of the one fifty, but opposed to the other two for what Tom said. Uh, one thing is, when you start making exceptions to the rules, where's it gonna end? And in this case, it's, it's justified, it's old time, so how would that? You start making exceptions to that, it's gonna be a still result that I don't wanna be a part of, so.
Just rather he may be required to apply a title action to clear title since he didn't get any kind of warranty deed or anything like that, he may have to file something, list everybody who may have come against it in the, uh, quiet title action and get a court to determine whether or not what he owes or what liens are valid and so forth. And then, you know, you, the county would be later party to that and we'd be coming and assert the validity of our liens at that point, but this piece of law, I'm gonna go here, then I'm gonna go here, and then I'm gonna go here. Um, I'm not sure if I'm a title insurance company or the buyer, but I'm gonna be satisfied with that at this point. Well, since he decided to take a shortcut, not getting any kind of title insurance or having a title search done before he bought it. Um, I mean, he took that risk, he got whatever interest his seller had at the time and gave it to him with a quick claim due. The seller wasn't even saying he had an interest in the property with a quick claim due. I'll sell you all my interest in the Golden Gate Bridge right now for a dollar. No, I'm not going to present to you that I own any interest in it, but for the interest I don't pay up a buck. That's basically a quick claim due, I'm gonna give you what I interest I own in this property.
Whether I have it or not.
Whether I have it or not.
It's unfortunate and expensive. It's the lesson for him to learn, but, I mean, perhaps he should have spoken with his mother before about the property first. Supposing now after the fact, and he's, he's on the short end of this deal for sure, but I, I just don't see where it's our responsibility to avail off any fashion other than the hundred and fifty dollars, it's usually probably some valid against it anyway. Thanks for the time that you spent on that.
Yeah, no problem. Don't, don't worry, uh, probably won't work on it, I thought it was going to be his first couple of months.
Very unique up here.
Anything else from your office?
Yeah, and we need to go into executive order for litigation matters, correct?
We can have personal help for me.
Yep.
Is there a motion for executive section, Marvson? Second, like example? Need discussion?
All in favor, second, but we're saying no.
All right.
I will go into executive session, share you real quick.
And to rescind the previous motion that we had in regards to came in from this contract repair. Is there a motion, Commissioner Carlson? Second, like Mr. Simple? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify the same eye. All in my opposed, say no, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Take a five minute break?
Can you man?
Those guys still calling in on that, uh, on that township?
Uh, squirrel, they're no.
Okay, what time is that supposed to be? Okay, so, yeah, okay.
Did you stimulus check town?
No, I didn't do, no, it's funny.
I did, I get charge cards.
My wife got hers and I didn't.
Really?
You had another stimulus one, no?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it's a six hundred buck thing.
Oh, you did?
I got, yeah, I, I, last time I got into my checking account, which I did get this. I went home and tried in there the debit card.
Yeah.
Really? I never got into that.
My course got like debit cards and I got one. And I think if you don't know by a certain basis, this needs to be applied here in that.
Oh, really?
So that also...
Yeah, I was surprised, your last time, like I got a direct deposit in, and this time...
It was true.
Yeah.
What's funny is that they're both stimulus payments for deposits, we each have our own checking account.
Yeah.
And they're both deposits and...
Well, is that right? Yeah, I just, my, my bank is just...
No, you can just take that to the bank and have it
Well, yeah.
deposit in your account.
Well, not in my bank. Yes, they don't do electronic transfers, I already called them, but...
Really?
Yeah, but they said you can use it as a debit card, you can use it online, it's grocery stores or whatever.
Yeah, I thought you're supposed to be able to do...
Well, you are supposed to, but my bank doesn't do electronic transfers. So they said, no, go somewhere else, so.
But it was odd that my wife got one, I didn't.
Yeah, what was odd too, then I read the whole thing, it said, you're getting this debit card because you don't have direct deposit or you didn't file something by the twenty-first of November, like have direct deposit, social security checks and all that kinda stuff.
But see, I asked them before, I said, well, if you give, if you have direct deposit, so, they, they don't know, but they know my income tax, so if you don't get a refund, you can't make, won't do it right.
Well, and see, we typically owe money every year, but, uh, I mean, but last year we got our, our twelve hundred dollar stimulus checks.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't...
Uh, I suppose it's typical government.
Yeah.
We are the government.
I think January is a much higher fashion than any time I've ever remembered in recent history. That is true.
Look the same, Faye. Look, look the same. 来了 Not everybody's taking a break, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. But he just feel wet. That is why you guys didn't go, and I'm like, well, not everybody's going. Going?
A little cold, then a little warm, so. Not as cold as it'll be in a couple of days, I don't have, no, my Christmas break.
My older, my older sister and her husband went to, went to Arizona for the first time ever, she just, they just want to retire. They ran to hospital, two months. So they're in flight, they go to flight, and they go through the flight staff, and there's snow.
Boy, that's high elevation.
So she said all these people were parked alongside the road. And the kids were sledding and sliding down the hills and they were building snowmen. So a little farther up, there's one of those DOT flashing signs. Do not, do not park alongside the road and play in the snow.
Right.
So they must have an issue with that.
You wouldn't see, you wouldn't see that around here.
They, they didn't stop. Minnesota. But when they got to where they were supposed to be at sixty-one degrees from the snow.
Yeah.
Did you have more stuff for us?
Yeah, I got...
So.
I thought, uh...
Know what this is for?
Give me a place to stay.
It's for, uh... I need the shape, but, okay, it should be real.
That's all right.
Pretty, oh, it's something there, uh, what's a good record?
I don't know. Still here, I guess.
Well, I gotta do the cars, too?
No, I've got, I've got, I've got file for Dennis.
Okay, I see, you got the cars on you, too, I don't wanna have to...
You got everything on there.
Nice. First thing I got is blue quotes for a month of family. And believe it or not, they tied them two months in a row on the diesel for those, two dollars and fifteen cents for another one funeral. Um, from CHS and Vins, it's died, and then, uh, the ethanol from the Vins is two twenty-six. And the ethanol from CHS was two dollars and forty cents. So CHS would have the ethanol and you know, you could flip a coin or whatever and, and, uh, diesel.
And we just go to the other purveyor that we didn't use last time?
You have to flip them, the time we got them.
You do that instead of making affairs? Game of Thrones, okay.
It's another month, so I would say that you would have to...
All right.
It's a new bed. Somebody got coin for that?
I don't.
I guess I don't have coin.
I, I do. It's in the garage.
Whoop! Penny.
Penny, hard to catch, we'll do a quarter. Next you just send me asking for half a dollar.
Hats! Two hits?
Heads for Beaver?
So we have...
Heads for Beaver?
Heads for Beaver? Throw this to his head.
Heads.
Heads for big.
Next time they give you a stone and a dollar. He's pretty fast at that. The whole, full of...
So then CHS would have the ethanol for two oh five, so we just need a motion on that.
Motion by simple, it came a little bit, or second by Faye. All in favor, signify the same eye. All right, motion carries.
I guess, uh, Tim brought up a little bit on a township bridge in Springfield. And, uh, I just put some stuff together for you that Ron had given me. I don't know if there's a big discussion on that, I don't know, if somebody's gonna come and speak to you about it, I have no idea, but it wasn't in on my deal, so. The info I took for you guys, just so you had food to thought. I understand that Tim and Dennis wanted to look at the bridge and I looked at it and I was like, oh my. It's all steel, bonded in there and steel on the, on the, on the walls, on the embuppments, and, I mean, it's really intact, very nice.
That little bridge, that's nice.
Plus it has all steel I D's going across on the deck. And then they put, well, uh, the planks on the deck, you can't see, but underneath you can see the perfect light. And then they put four by eight sheets on top and sealed it up. So, and the windmills look excellent. So, the only thing like I said in this note that you read it, if you're on a narrow road, which is really part of the problem, and then the eighteen foot depth goes beyond the deck, see? So when you drive down the road, it's narrow, then when you hit the bridge, of course, it's wider, but you still can't really get over too far because it is narrow. Now, they wanna replace it, but that's what you guys all want to replace it. I mean, it's their bridge, it's their road. Um, they're asking for help, you know, so whether you wanna give them five hundred dollars or not, um, when I measured the square footage, of course, um, that's what it would come out to be then, is the two nine footers, to get the same exact square feet covered. But it is narrow, so I only took forty feet, otherwise you'd be just about in halfway to the fence line on one side, on the south side, but you know, you could go a little bit more, but, anyway, that's what I would take is a couple nine footers, we go in there. Um, it's about seven and a half to eight foot to the bottom of the decking, so that's basically where it would hide it, to the bottom of the deck. And that was about seven and a half to eight foot, so technically this would be a little bit higher to build up a foot or two over the top of the nine foot cover there, but of course, there was ice, so you could get that foot or two if you want, you'll, you'll, um, end up being to the right height when you do that. You know, when you do it with the bottom of where it's...
The, the fact that it's five feet short of being a legal road, is that, how does that play it?
Uh, that's their view.
Do, do, would it be considered a, a not a legal road then?
Well, it's not very legal, no. It's pretty narrow there. I've measured it three times, to the shoulder, to the shoulder of the ground. That's it.
That's it, fifteen feet.
So it's not very wide, um. So technically, uh, it should be twenty feet minimum, but that's why they have a problem, they're coming down to that actually, you know, a little bit of a no, it was too exciting, it's way, way. And when you get to there, you know, it's just right down the middle of that cover, under that bridge.
It's just farming equipment? Farming equipment?
There's no way that you... There's no way that you're...
You're probably not there to call off farming.
But that's their deal, not here, they're on their common deal, you know, farming five hundred dollars or more for the culverts, and... That's all that came out of it.
I guess what concerns me the most is they've got like two and a half times their annual expenses in the bank. It seems a little bit excessive to me, and, and you said that they've actually put out ten cents per thousand dollars valuation this year to raise more funds, so...
Right.
And the fact it's not, not a legal sized road, I, I guess, I don't feel the obligation to... You know, even though it's only five hundred dollars.
Not only were not so many feet, they mentioned the road, you know, on both sides, but, you know, whether the road is wider from here on the other intersection, or farther down, like, it has to be without the, I didn't measure the whole mile of road, and it's... Anyway, that's, that's what's been happening, you know.
Uh, Pat, the, the culvert, uh, cost that you have there is seventy-nine hundred dollars, is that our cost, so we...
That's our cost, Beetle.
That's our long end cost?
That's exact cost of what it would be in twenty twenty, and we have, uh, our new placing coming up this month. Um, Beetle County has been two weeks behind on the billlet and on two north school, again, which is a lot of time to go over and do that on that. They didn't get it on the paper right away, so we're waiting for the Vins to come, come and watch. That is the cost that it was last year.
But I think they can go up this year.
They could go up on any size, they usually jump from different sizes as possible.
But are these culverts that we have on inventory, we've already paid for them?
We don't have these, we don't have nine footers on hand.
Okay.
These are hundred and eight inch down.
So, their cost might be a little higher?
Their cost would be higher if it's a new cost for this year, yes.
Okay.
You know, it could be from fifty cents to something five hundred dollar foot, you know? I mean, it depends on what steel it's doing, you know?
Just curious, can you know, we're allowing them to get it at our cost, if we didn't do that, how much more would they have to pay me?
They wouldn't have to pay anymore, they can actually get it their own account and get it directly from them if they want to offer that bid.
All right.
They're downshift, so they need downshift, which we've been lately been trying to get them to do that, but they have, that way, when they have a culvert they wanna get, whether it goes through the county to get delivered, or brought to the county ads and be picked up, then I can bill the township, you know, and I don't have to bill them, and then they have to, you know, otherwise...
You just clean it up.
True north. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Because that would come out of my budget, out of my end, out of my budget, so we don't wanna do that. So, we're quick with that. You gotta hear this, so that way, you know...
That's right.
Or just kind of that way, you know, they do. Direct, you know, in public, front of the, exchange it with us, you know, so... Um, before we do the state bids, I guess, that's something that I'd like to bring up. When we were gonna purchase the John Deere blade, um, I'm gonna pass this out. This has been only a few months that this blade has had this new turntable, it's gonna pass this out. I have one three two down. They came out with a premium circle, which is what we have now, the old style, which we have now, we have inserts that make a circle, and there's cap ones and there's bottom ones, and you have to replace them when they wear. So, like, when you know, when you get a lot of washboarding in the drop of roads, you get a lot of washboarding, like, we have changed the ones in Summit, and we've also done the ones in African. Um, and then we sent a bunch back here a couple months ago that we didn't use, and the one in Summit, these, uh, get worn, and as they wear, you tighten them, and you have to put shims in and takes them out, that's how it works with turntables, right? So, when you're glating, as time goes on, as years go on, and they wear, now your mold board's always gonna be jumping and moving a little, and you're gonna have a tolerance, that's gonna get thicker and get around there, and what it does is that's where you get a lot of play and washboarding and glating, but that's as time goes, but we've been, you know, for years, you have your inserts, and that's what we deal with. Now, they came out with just a few months back, and they've been testing this for a long time. Now, what they have in the premium circle, yes, it just has ball bearing in there, and, uh, what it is, is, oh, now the maintenance on there is, you get forty percent increase on your torque, you get fifteen percent increase on your speed, how it works, but what it is, is it's maintenance free, very much now, but you, uh, reese it every five hundred dollars, and every, uh, four thousand, let's see, what is it? I think it's four thousand. You reese it every five hundred hours, and then every four hundred hours, the gearbox oil is changed and air is built, and what this sounds like is like a track hole, so you know how a track hole screams out a turntable on top? It's totally enclosed, and it runs on those dents and that here. So, now, that's what it is, it's like an excavator turntable, so now your turntable on the blade is moving quicker, stronger, and also, when you don't have that tolerance moving all the time, your glating will be, all the time will be the same, you'll never have that wear, you know, where it comes around. And this came out, and, um, Jerry gave me a list of all the other counties that have just purchased that, and also, um, there was contractors that have been handling this, and the one contractor was, I don't know if you call it, he had all cap blades, and then they had the John Deere, and they went through this, and they went, I guess, waiting for testing for this contractor, and by the time they got the blade out, done some, they're gonna use it for rentals all over, that guy wanted to write a check for it, because the reason is why they want this, is the contractors that buy these used machines, the tolerance is very low, so when they're out there building roads, and they're dealing with GPS, and all that, and it's like, I just bought it, so now this is the new turntable where it came out, but, and it's optional right now because it just came out, so, that's seventy-five hundred dollars, and these counties still are the ones I got it, but I wasn't aware of that when we did do the bidding on that, and Jerry told me here last week, after the fact, and even though seven to five hundred dollars were still, you know, less money than what the bid was to give you, too. So, I wanted to bring it out there, um, I know that it's a lot of money, but, and also, if after five years from now, we're six, and we wanna get rid of it, it's gonna be worth that much money, too, you know? But it's the maintenance free, it's cost attractive in the long run, but it's something I wasn't aware of when we were doing the bidding, after the fact, and I found out from county card, Marshall Zeebuck card, and they all, you know, they, they went with it, but it was an option, if you say your name or no, I mean, they're not gonna... Well, shit, it's just, uh, we put it down now. Cause the time to do it, if we're gonna do it, I do have a picture of that, and it's kinda hard to see. They do have a video out on us, and the guy explains how it works, everything he does. It's not rocket science how it works, it's just all enclosed with bearing and, and the oil reservoir of the motor system, it's just that you won't have your top and bottoms all wide open, getting the chair holding and all of the wearing on the track there, it's now, that doesn't wear regardless, the ones we have with the shims, but it's, it's not where it all comes out of.
We decided to do this with the tax return to the...
It was just factored into the lease that we have, but that... Yep, it would just be one month every month for the payment on the amortization, because now the new order was there without it.
They're gonna put that delay to the...
No. Jerry was gonna talk to me today and want, want to change this, whatever we wanna go with.
We'll, we'll have some savings in the maintenance.
Oh, that's pretty safe, right? The shims might have to be...
Plus, we're gonna have to grab a little...
Yeah, it's gonna be a true, true cut on time where I checked you, and unless the option, it's gonna be all operator, all, but you won't have that when it gets so loose and gets wore, like, you know, the older ones are gonna get worn. I mean, it's gonna be issues where they move, I mean, it's gonna be, I'm learning terrible regardless after so many years. I'm assuming after not too many months, you know, two, they won't even have those out anymore. That's just me, I mean, I'm assuming that's what it'll be all the time, on the road.
Just reminds me of the upselling, the salespeople would have to be committed to something. See, what I think concerns me is a brand new feature like that, you know, I can't work the bugs out.
Yeah, they've had it known for months, um, down waiting for months, I guess, and now there's some...
Jerry been the salesman to that?
Besides that, you know, it's, it's still a full warranty for five, six years that we have in the machine, so we're not out, not gonna be out of it, you know?
It didn't work, you say, yeah?
They would not have to redo the machine, I mean, they would have to stand behind the warranty no matter what, so... And the warranty that Jerry was giving, I don't pay mildly on any of what I'm warrantying, when they come and go from the, from the... I have a picture here of what the inside of the new one's gonna look like, they also have different controls on it, you know? Right now, we have a control on there that are... Might be prolonged. Right here, um, it's just the little titles with the little joysticks on each hand on the inside. Well, it creates a lot on your wrist and stuff upon one, so, the new style has this right to the left, it has just another hand grip, so my hands will be here, and I'll run the machine, and then I'll be using the push button over that thing instead, so it won't be the joysticks where I'm turning and moving like this, you know, what the other ones were, now, it's still a big scope, swapped out, the same as what we are using, it's just that we better optimize this thing, but... Because this way, they'll just be over again, they're still looking older, I love, but, you know, anyway, that's, uh, pretty dangerous, we're gonna go with that style, so that it isn't, you know? It's not as hard as I knew it was, you know? But that's what it's all gonna be, I mean, he said you could swap these out, even if I didn't have it, I go in, I wanted to put those in, just a matter of taking those out, putting the other ones in, and it'll be all the right things. And it's gonna be a lot easier on the, on the guy for, you know, running with your wrists, so... You also steer on the left on that one, on that left side, so... But anyway, I won't take any more down on that. Your son maybe wants one of them, yeah, that'll help him, that's for the road. I guess, like I say, that seventy-five hundred dollars being incorporated with the sale right away, and then it's done, I'm hoping that we get a lot more resale prices. Guaranteed that it won't be all the blades' fault, but I mean, you're gonna get away from that, man, you're gonna get away from that whole, like, they got the video, the chills running, the torque locked. Couple hundred pounds of petition on this, maybe.
He's worth it, though. When it says fa- fifteen percent faster, that just...
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
They're to keel eight when it goes this way out, and it also has way more power.
Yeah.
Strength.
Yes.
In the video, like you said, they'll alphabet petitions, not ones that they have on interstate, and they come along, they take it, and go like this, which would break it.
Okay.
So, if you got a lot of y'all that you're putting in, you're gonna have no problem pulling it out. That'll be less than ninety, you know?
When we rebuild a road, we don't use any GPS monitoring at all?
We haven't. We don't use GPS, because, but we do have it on the machines already already, that doesn't have it for cost, so you can hook up GPS on your blade if you have a system. You have to find a whole GPS system first.
Right, right.
The contractor is good, you know, it's all GPS now, so they start running, make this, and then off it goes on to your, like what we do, and we put bike there, and then you have your, you know, put our, um, stick in.
It's like a laser shot, they...
It is, I manage it.
I almost see nothing.
And that's what these contractors, stuff that they're putting, because these contractors are gonna be buying these machines up.
You want a separate motion to approve this change?
Yeah. That way, we gotta put the change, I got it onto this price.
Okay, your, your motion to approve the upgrade, about, you know, the upgrade. Faye, thank you, for a second for that, Sean, thank you. All in favor signify the same, huh? All right, what's your case?
Thank you. I guess we got two for the beds on our surplus, but... I gotta put the calls, we had a couple, um, lots of stuff there, so...
These are, oh, yours and the pickup?
Yes.
That's everything, and they should kind of be in order, Dennis, although, some people didn't give me like three separate envelopes.
For one, one night.
Yeah. So, you might have, you're gonna have some over here.
That little envelope with my name on it was, uh, somebody from Vermont asked about it, and I think it's mainly on, uh, on the sheep foot, but it shouldn't say, uh...
It doesn't suffer about you.
Not for you.
No, that was received, and what I do, when I receive a bid, is I put the date when I receive it, and what time it was, and I sign it.
Now, the, the sheep foots were, were, you had two of them?
Yes, there's two small sheep foot, and I told them it would have to be bid separately on one at a time, if you wanted one, it was so much, if you wanted both of them, you had to bid for both.
Was one on the east and one on the west?
No, they're side by side in, in the county yard, but the packers were over in the trees by the four...
There we go. Okay, it's a sheep foot packer with hitch. Okay, on our tally sheet, it just has two of them, so, this one's with the hitch. Uh, Jason Beal of Wilmont did five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I do for the pair.
That would be for both of them, because it has two sheep foots.
Oh, for both of them? Okay.
But now, that's what he's bringing there, he's saying for the sheep foot.
Snowboard. Three hundred and sixty-two dollars. And I can't read the signature.
I think I know who it is. That's my brother Mark Flyer.
Oh, okay, Mark Flyer, it's three sixty-two.
No, it'd be about three or four different ones.
Okay.
He forgot to put his address.
Uh, so similar? There. Uh, Mark is fifty-two dollars. Like, well, I'm not gonna bear it.
This is average, fifty-two?
Fifty-two even. All right. Sheep foot bid. So, also from Mark, uh, thirty-eight dollars. Okay. Two Packers, Paver, Screener, some John's example.
So, what is that on that? The two Packers?
The Temple and the Bros?
Yep.
And what was the other one then? Okay. Yeah, it's, uh, one, two, that looks like he's got them bid separately here, so. Uh, five hundred dollars on the Woods, snowblower. A one thousand fifty dollars.
On what?
On the nineteen eighty-eight Plains State Conveyor.
How much?
One thousand fifty.
Plains State.
Thank you, you can be here.
I think so, and the motor went with it, right, Pat?
No, there's no motor, I haven't seen it.
You got a motor in your shed down there, though.
No, God, I think it was sold on an auction a couple of years back, I believe.
Here.
Yeah.
Uh, the two sheep foot packers. Two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, the sixty-five Temple packer, one twenty-five. And the Bros packer, one twenty-five. And the Layton Paver, three twenty-five.
Because now, that, that Paver, or that Screener was the way it's been sitting for the years, and I wanted to look, you know, on that. I owned all the few years ago, it was in the shop, and then it was put on the auction a few years ago. Looked up, gone a few years ago, so if you wanted to call, the cherry one, stand by that.
I can tell, there was no motor.
You should have seen that when you went to look at that, the motor wasn't on call. So.
Check call.
And if you wanted to call him, otherwise, I'm assuming if you, in, uh.
Um, here he's got East Sheep Foot, and this will be Mark Flatlin. Uh, thirty-nine dollars.
Oh, so he did one.
He did one, he did both.
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine, so the two others, about sixty-seven bucks.
Thirty-eight and thirty-nine, okay. Seventy-seven? Uh, Jason Fraritz bidding on the Sheep Foot, pull type. He's got on the envelopes there. I don't know which, which one is, one's a pull type, and the other one isn't?
No, they're both pull type, yeah, but one is in the snowboard, and then again, see, but they both have a light pull type on each one.
Okay, because he's got one Sheep Foot packer, a five sixty-two.
And now, we're gonna be the east one, the east one is showing the most, and then the last, that one more snow on it, so that's what we would want. The east one.
Would he use the packer on the sheep foot packer?
When you're building roads, it's a packer on the dirt, and to do some action on the road, you just pull it behind, and it's got like spikes on it, and it.
Looses it up and then packs it back down?
It's more of a packer, obvious is what you're using for. Like you'll see, uh, now, there's, uh, contractors have something else. You drive it, you sit on it, and have a big drum, and it has more of the knobs, like you see, uh, the knob that you see like.
Land filter.
Compactor, you have the compactor ones, they don't have these compactor with big spikes anymore. But you use it for compacting, like they could use it in their.
Oh, okay.
Compactor.
Jason, Jason Fraritz.
She, she's.
On the east Sheep Foot. Five sixty-two on that.
Yeah, your brother used to be using the same calculator, they call these odd numbers.
Yeah, well, he's my dad's son, you know.
Yeah. Jason was?
No.
That is a ruber.
Does he look like me?
We're referring to Mark Fladlin, and he's also bidding on the two Packers. The Bros packer at sixty-two dollars, and the Temp, what did they call that one? Temple? Uh, for thirty-eight dollars. And that's vehicle, that's vehicle.
I think that, I should have all the rest of these vehicles, I tried to put them.
Yeah, there was no bid on the pressure washer, right?
Nope.
Yeah, you laid up to the Layton Paver.
The only bid on the Layton Paver was that one, huh, by Josh's? I know the city of San Juan was looking at it. Couple guys from there were looking at it.
Should that be worth it, or not?
No, it's not, I mean.
And that's it for your stuff, Pat. And then we go to the vehicles. Two thousand caravan. Got a bid from, oh, he's got, uh, two vehicles in here. Uh, Joe Just. Uh, bid eight fifty-five on the van. And the Lumina, four fifty-five. Then we got Bryce Johnson from Stummert. Bidding on all the vehicles. The caravan, he's got seven hundred and eleven dollars. The Lumina, he's got seven hundred and sixteen dollars. The Chevy Impala, six hundred and fifty-three dollars. And the sixty-eight Chevy Pickup, one thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars.
Is that Bryce or Bruce, Captain?
That's Bryce.
Bryce.
Bryce, oh, that's the son.
That's the son, yeah, they were both here, but Bryce wasn't in it.
Do you think he's seen them for test drives, or, I don't know, do you matter?
I don't think any of them did, um, they were down, started up, and, yeah, the clearly based.
Uh, Mark Flatlin is bidding on the Dodge Caravan. Uh, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Is this Frank? What's the last name, Frank?
Eccles.
Eccles?
Yeah, Frank Eccles.
E C C L E S, Frank Eccles bids on the two thousand Dodge Caravan. Uh, one thousand five hundred dollars, oh, one thousand five hundred and one dollar. Must watch the prices, right? Okay.
Sorry, I didn't give enough lines there.
I'm just writing on the envelopes, I'm not writing on my spreadsheets, and now you folks, I can't tell them. Um, this one is from Mark Flatlin. The ninety-nine Chevy Lumina. Uh, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. Okay, Frank Eccles bidding on the ninety-nine Chevy Lumina. Five hundred and one dollars. We got a lot of bids, don't we?
Yeah.
Shot.
Yeah. This is on the ninety-nine Chevy Lumina. Angela. Angela Vico. Ninety-nine Chevy Lumina, three hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-two cents. And here's someone for the Chevy Impala. Mark Flatlin. Three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Go to the Chevy Impala. Frank Eccles bids five hundred and one dollars. And the Chevy Pickup. Sixty-eight Chevy Pickup.
Do the screen go right to Pat?
Yes.
Yes.
Bid's two hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Who had it?
Uh, oh, sorry, Mark Flatlin. There's another one on the Chevy Pickup.
That was a hot item.
Was it?
Yes, it was.
Patrick Fitz. Bid's five hundred dollars. Uh, another one for the sixty-eight Chevy Pickup. This one comes from Kerry Agers, also. He bids four hundred and eighteen dollars. Another one on the sixty-eight Chevy Pickup. This one comes from Rick Holt. Three hundred and ten dollars. Another one on the Chevy Pickup. This one comes from Floyd Udrow. Uh, bids five hundred and five dollars. Another one on the Chevy Pickup. This one comes from David Stewart of Sisypheen. He bids three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this one's on the Chevy Pickup. This comes from Jerry Gilbert, two hundred dollars. Old Green Pickup. This comes from Jay Tassa, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Okay, that'll be the last one for the Chevy Pickup.
He did four thousand.
Uh, Myron Junior Van Hout, five hundred dollars. All right, how many does Ben do in the bookwork on that? What is our high bid on that?
It's snowboard.
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred was the high bid? And who, who bid that?
Josh.
Josh, okay. You wanna take these more at a time? Motion to roll.
All.
No.
If I roll one.
Uh, the nineteen-eighty-eight Command and Bear. Josh got that?
Yeah, he said that's where it did, so it's the same. I told him. But he said it's free.
What are the...
Thousand fifty dollars.
Okay. Sheetfoot.
How do you do there? Jason Ferris wanted the east one. So...
And he got it for five-sixty-two on the east. And Beal wants the other one for five-twenty-five, otherwise...
I think I got a lot of both then.
Yeah.
Hell, yeah. That's right.
You want a both, all.
Simple, get the other. Well, Josh, is that both of them or one of them?
Both.
So he would take the five-twenty-five, maybe divide it by two, or what do you do?
I think that was all the Packers. Sheetfoot Packers? Oh. Yeah, two-twenty-five on the fair. Of Sheetfoot Packers. That's Josh on the fair. Yeah. And Jason, five-sixty-two on the east one, that's who he said. Yeah, his bid had one, one Sheetfoot Packer at five-sixty-two.
I'd buy Jason.
The other one at a hundred bucks. He wanted the pair.
He wanted pairs to be two-hundred-and-sixty-two fifty for the walk.
Fifty for the walk.
He wants the walk, yeah.
Jason, do you want the two-twenty-five for four as well?
Jason.
And Josh is five-seventy-two, right?
Yeah.
Fair is out.
Yeah, but if Jason wants just the one.
Yeah, and Beal will get the other one for half if he wants it.
He wants it, yeah.
Because he made for both for the half, which is two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars.
So what Jason Beal wanted was five-twenty-five for four?
Jason Ferris, five-sixty-two.
For one.
For one.
How did the other bid come in on the...
How much Jason Beal...
On the simple one?
Well, we have Mark Gladland did thirty-eight, I want him thirty-nine on the other.
Well, he's out.
Well... Because the other two were for both, so...
So it's either Beal.
If I can't have both, I don't want any. Then you gotta go with the...
Yeah, if Beal is two-sixty-two, he wants it, or Josh wants that one-twelve for one.
Yeah.
So you go to Jason Beal first and say, do you want the one for two-sixty-two?
If he doesn't, goes in for Josh. One for all.
He didn't, he didn't indicate two on his, on his bid. J- Jason Beal.
Oh.
He said, I, I bid five-twenty-five for Sheetfoot Packer, that's it.
So it's only the one.
Okay.
So they both had pitches?
Yes, they both have pitches, so...
Oh, all right, and then to a question.
So then I guess I'll do that. He wants the one. Jason can get one on that, so...
They work together.
So they're each bidding one?
They're each getting one, yeah.
So then Jason Beal will get the west one?
Yes. Jason, yeah, it's a big east one.
I'm surprised they didn't come off and talk to you about it.
They talked to me on the phone, and I looked down, so I said, that's all.
Okay. The next three, I'll go to Josh.
Yeah.
Yeah. Both Packer, Temple Packer, Lake Peter. One-twenty-five, one-twenty-five, three-twenty-five.
One-twenty-five, one-twenty-five, three-twenty-five.
Twenty-one and forty, you would say?
Oh, I got that forty, yeah.
No bid on the pressure washer. I didn't see one anywhere, anything he did. Did you see it coming?
Well, you see it coming, or... Good, thirty-two. Five hundred and so. That would be on the pair. Uh, one Sheetfoot at five-twenty-five.
No, 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 that's Jason Beal.
Right, he got one, and Ferris got the other at five-sixty-two.
He's at, oh, I like it.
He was at the voice, pulling all man out together. I get thirty-two twelve for all the, all past stuff.
Thirty-two twelve?
Yeah.
That's pretty. Did you get sixteen-twenty-five? Is that the number you came up with? For who? For example? Twenty-one, twenty-eight.
Twenty-one, twenty-five.
Oh, okay, nice.
Five hundred thousand fifty.
Twenty-five, yeah, okay.
Is that what you got?
Twenty-one, twenty-five.
That's what I got. Yeah.
So you want to make some...
If you want a third one, the vehicles to the price that you got for them.
Yeah, so, week, for the week. Just one.
So you got fifteen oh-one for Brent for the Dodge, and then you got seven-sixteen for the... Six-fifty-three for the... Twelve-fifty-four for the Chevy.
Which one did the sheriff's office like back?
They talked about the Inman Alana. So I think you need to talk to Tyler. To see if Tyler's setting out a way. Do you want to weigh in on this?
You, you got the high bids there, Frank? Tell me, tell me again, the Go-Slow Caravan was how much?
One thousand five hundred and one dollars from Frank.
Frank Echoes, yeah. Okay.
And you have seven hundred and sixteen dollars from Bryce Johnson.
On the Lumina?
On the Lumina. And you have six hundred and fifty-three dollars on the two-thousand Chevy Impala. And that was from Bryce Johnson. And then Bryce Johnson also got the sixty-eight Chevy pickup for one thousand two hundred and fifty-four hours.
He does have a used car lot though, something.
Oh, does he? Okay.
Well, everybody's entitled to their opinion, but, um... I think, I think we should retain that Chevy Impala for the sheriff's office. We're, we're short on vehicles out there right now. For the foreseeable future, the thing is good for running errands. And for six hundred fifty, six hundred fifty-three, I think we should hang on to it.
I agree with that. Tax, and insurance, and all that's good for that. For time being, I would...
I think, I think also that Dodge Caravan, that... If we're gonna send the Impala out there and let go of some of the other stuff... I think it's got some more useful weight here for the, for the staff here. Personally, I think that Lumina, we should take the high bid. And I was hoping to see about fifteen hundred on that Chevy pickup, but twelve-fifty-four is respectable, but... Whatever the group wants to do, but that's my opinion.
The Dodge Caravan was on there, framed by the state, is that right? Because I knew the impression that we were keeping.
Okay. And we, we made the motion, and we made the motion to advertise. And, uh, yeah.
Keep the Impala.
Because in April, we're sold, we have an incentive option.
Yeah.
Or go back to this person that offered, and things change.
All right, is there a motion to accept the high bids that we talked about? With the exception, we're gonna reject the Dodge Caravan and the Chevy Impala. A motion by Carlson to accept the high bids, is there a second? Okay. Okay, condition is simple, abstains from the vote? All in favor of the vote signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right.
Forty-five hundred bucks around figures. About forty-five hundred bucks.
Me is not.
Figured you'd say about this, or something.
I would have more than spring, what is that?
Who's that?
About forty-five hundred bucks, top and bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's strong figures.
All right, I'll say a hedge bet, but you appreciate it.
Are we making a decision on the spring deal, Rick? We have to make a motion or anything?
Well, they were going to call in, so... All right. Steve's called, you know, he's called a couple of times, so I'm about to go to call in.
We can make a decision, not if they call you, he's, that's honor.
Typically, you don't make motions not to do something, but, um, in, in this case, I think we're in agreement to sell the... Allards, like we typically would. And it'd be up to them to install it.
Yeah. Install it.
Yeah. Right.
Don't give no breaks at the price. That's your decision.
Right.
So we've got so many county grids set up. Boy, you see what the township, the county grid looks like in there, township already. Mr. Cant, I can see that a lot of township wanting that tonight. So, no, I can't.
Hopefully, they, they can come around from the east, or that way, um, he gets a more refined arts. They'll go again and have it, no problem, it's just that they don't want to go around. I'm open to do that. Couple bridges over east there, so...
You know what we got?
Get all of you then.
Do you want to talk to Jason Beal?
Yes, I will call there. Um, Jason, you know, let's see.
Jason, sure. Twenty-two oh-four for very sort of Beal.
I got them. I'll call them, I don't know, so, I'll give her a hand.
I think she wants the other one, yeah.
He needs help, I guess, if you have time to do it, I don't know.
I came up with five dollars and one hundred and eighty-two dollars.
So I didn't actually get it, it's like...
Five hundred and one.
Five, that's minus a...
Yeah, that's, that's what we, we do the exception.
I missed a missed one.
It'll go a long way towards the purchase of a Dusac. Still shopping.
We did see a note that, that short list that she sent us, her emails. It was a twenty-twenty mail, I think they ran it with their eye. Like seventeen thousand dollars. Well, that's a... I think it's a reasonable bar, I mean, it's probably something down there, I have a whole lot on this one.
Okay.
At age, he's at seventeen grand for a mail. Like the last, last year to me is twenty-four. Yeah, probably with the...
We'll take a good look at that sheet.
Morning.
Good morning. But that was more than that.
What was that?
It was more than that, email.
I thought the mail was twenty dollars, hard, seventeen dollars, yeah. Did they have some different options, are they on there and then, or are they just available?
All right, um, we picked up our pickup yesterday. Here is the...
That's the Dodge one?
The Chevy Silverado. Sounded like we were gonna be waiting a little while for the Dodge pickup, and then all of a sudden, we got a call this week that it might be here in the next week or two.
Really?
So, uh... Yeah, I, I'll just wait here, 'cause sometimes all of a sudden, it'll get to one place, and then it will sit there for a little while before it gets back on the truck or a train. That's what took so long with the Chevy pickup, so... Uh... The statewide sex offender registry conference is coming up April nineteenth and twentieth. Deb, as well as Chandra, Deb asked and Chandra go along with her. We're gonna take Deb's vehicle. The first, the first night is paid for. They requesting to stay there for the second, for the second day, so we're probably looking at... Probably seventy-five dollars for staying at the lodge for that.
Is that a Debwood?
Uh, Deb, yeah.
Where else?
Yeah, they're...
Where else?
They are all out there this year. Every, every...
Oh, yeah.
Every conference that there is this year, almost every single one of those, they'll be there. Uh... One of our correctional officers, Lindsay Zaskopol. She is who is trained under our facility in CPI, which is, from everything that I'm being told so far, is mandatory that somebody on your staff is a CPI trained. Or has a CPI certification. It's mainly used for dealing with juveniles. And since we have a juvenile, since we are categorized to have a juvenile facility, um... It's, she, it also allows, it's an instructor training. So she's already, this is a recertification, and allows her to train all the other correctional officers in CPI, which is how to do either certain holds... And how to work with juveniles at the facility. She's been doing that, it was a three-year certification, and this is the recert that's coming up. It'll be all done online, so there's no cost of lodging or anything like that. But the cost of the recertification is twelve hundred dollars. So, I, it's, that's what I, that's why I asked when I, when I saw that. I asked if there were other, if there were other options and other, other availability for something like that. And everything I'm finding out is it's pretty much, pretty much a must for any juvenile facility to have somebody on staff.
And it's for three years.
And it's good for three years.
Yep.
So, let's see, they could do that.
Yeah.
All right.
You want motions on separate? Would be motion for expenses? For the, for the Deadwood Conference, and motion to approve that. Done, is there a second? I want to figure that, signify by saying aye.
I just pointed out that one's gonna drive out there, she takes her own car, there's a company car available to you, and it's half the, half the rate, right, the gas?
When is the sale?
April, my kingdom, twenty.
Wouldn't like our new vehicle, content, which is an option.
I'll let her know that it's an option, I don't know if it was something that she was concerned about.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to think that she's gonna give me reverse it.
Yep.
Twice the way, wouldn't it be half the way if she takes her own car?
I will mention that.
Half the rate? Or how many, was it forty-five and...
Yeah, one-way, you could pay one-way mileage then, if there's something else available.
But if we don't have a common car available to you.
Yeah, then she can buy one good for reverse.
I think she's maybe done this before.
Okay, all right.
All right, then a motion to approve the expenses on the CPI training. Babe, Tim, have a second? I'll figure that motion, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
Okay, Tom. Here is a letter that was sent out to all of the... Agencies that we currently have contracts with, or that need house for. It is, it is a letter basically outlining our desire to take on their medical transports. And here's why. What's often happening is, we are, especially with, with the, having our jail nurse, she is getting people set up for appointments at the dentist, appointments at the hos- at CVP hospital, appointments over at I... she is getting people set up for appointments at the dentist, appointments at the hos, at CVP Hospital, appointments over at IHS. It sounds like the hiccup has been coming in when other agencies that are saying they want to do their transports are not telling us that they're not gonna make it until fifteen minutes before the appointment is scheduled. And you can imagine the amount of struggle it causes for us, when we're already transporting up here for jail, and of our, our appointments. So we are, we are putting it out there to them that we will, that we would like to take that on. And I think we're looking at a rate of approximately twenty dollars per hour. The previous, from looking back at previous contracts, the previous MOU contract that I saw through the tribe was fifteen dollars. So, and that wasn't twenty-seventeen, the one I read. So. You know, we also have, for some of those other agencies, Marshall County, and Walworth County, we have officers from Walworth County that are driving to Sisson for a fifteen-minute doctor's appointment. And turning around and driving home.
Yeah.
So. So this is basically a way of us trying to recoup some of the time that we're already ending up spending and not charging them. So now we're just, James has started to put that onto their bills already.
We should charge a minimum one hour, right? We should have a minimum for the. We can charge fifteen minutes and they charge, you know, four bucks to go with it. Right, you should get a minimum one hour. And these other ones that are calling up in the last minute, can't sleep, perhaps we should say, okay, fine, we'll do that, but now that twenty-dollar charge is gonna go to something greater, because it puts a hell of a burden on us. So if they don't call you within an hour, they can tell you they wanna change, or whether that number is, you know, I think there should be an upcharge.
This letter out be gone now?
It has. So, and the reason, and, and the reason that we sent it out is to start that conversation. All of their contracts are gonna be coming due in May. So, this is kind of that opportunity for us to have that conversation with them ahead of time, and then we're gonna make those adjustments to their contracts, so that it's right in there. And we can deal with it, deal with it in the future. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Then it, it should have also had to be February, because I'm questioning this, because it looks like January, they've sent some of the other transport, so he's already initiated this?
For the ones that we already are, we haven't been charging in Marshall, Marshall service for transport, and it was right in our contract.
I think in Marshall, you have to fight two, two deputies, right?
And, and you have to, and you have to have, you have, have two deputies. So, in the, we haven't even been charging them over the course of, I don't know how long that contract's been going, we gotta charge them for that. So, we've been missing out on a significant.
Yeah.
A significant piece there, and as soon as we, as soon as we initiated that conversation with them about the bill, the person who was in charge of that, they contacted us and they just said, hey, I see you guys are starting to charge for the, for the transport costs for, for medical. Is that gonna be something you guys plan on doing, or I see it is in our contract, I just need to know that that's what you guys are doing. And we said, yeah, that's what we're doing, this is why. And they said, okay.
So on Marshall, because it requires two deputies, would they be charged a higher rate?
Yeah, we're gonna have to look at that, changing that contract, that cost, because, yeah, that's significant. Yeah, absolutely.
And when I look at the wage scale, you know, we're paying some more, it's about sixteen dollars an hour. Are we having to have somebody else come in when they're, you know, transporting?
Certain draft works?
Yeah.
Uh, certain.
Questioning, is twenty dollars an hour enough?
Certain inmates, it's, it's probably not, we do, at times, that this into, if we were sending an officer or a deputy to do it, it's less of an issue. But when you're, when you're sending a correctional officer that doesn't have the tools or the training that we have, it can cause concern. So for certain inmates with a history of violence, you know, it is something that we can, that we can all. And none of that, like I said, this is something that we would like to rework with the contracts to make sure that we're benefiting from, from that, but also that they're benefiting from. Because if they're not driving from Walworth County or all the way over in Marshall County for a twenty-minute appointment, that's putting them at, that's putting them, you know, behind the eight ball too.
Same with them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we'll, that twenty dollars is not anything that's set stone. It was just kind of something that we looked at, and that we were jumping for, especially with the tribe, trying to get theirs up to more today's time.
I would just say, treat yourself well, financially, I do, because we are providing service. I think most people are gonna look at it as exactly, as like, wow, we're gonna have to drive all the way up to do this, I'll do it for, yeah, tax them on it all, but I just say, treat yourself well.
Okay? I had, I just put in another call this morning, 'cause I still hadn't heard about what they decided to do with the estimate on a vehicle. But I did get a message back from Highway Patrol regarding some of the vehicles they have on, in stock for us. Take a look at, everything that they have is below eight thousand dollars.
Really?
The message to me said that they, that they would prefer if we were, if I were gonna look at something like that, to come up, test drive the ones that we're looking at, and then go from there. They would come with cages, radar, light bars, gun locks, all of the, pretty much outfitted for us already, which will put us in a good spot.
Ten dollars just.
Yeah, yeah, right. And those items would not, would not add to the price of the car.
They all cars better?
Uh, they sounded like they had surplus of top holds at the time. So. They, they didn't, they didn't, this was a, this was kind of just a, maybe this is what we might have available for you guys, or can give you that information, so. I'm gonna, oh, I'll continue to work on that.
And the way to think, you might wanna jump on that at the same time you go to pick up your new pickup?
Can you go up here, right?
Yep.
Pick another person.
Honestly, if you bought one, you'd have to put it over in it, it'd still be money, even with what you get in the, all the police stuff.
Looking over it. What do you think?
Okay.
Yeah, I think you better get on it, all the, before the good ones are picked over.
Okay.
I'll give you that, something to fix wrong.
That's, uh, the only other two things that I have that I just, are just more of an FYI, is our Deputy Lesnar has applied to the Cuyahoga County Sheriff's Office. From all of my understanding, this is, the Cuyahoga County Sheriff's Office is basically him and Drew Jop. And that's, they had, they were part of a cops grant that they were allocated for more police officers. He's a good friend of his that works there, and that's kind of the motivation for him wanting to go there.
Has he been accepted or?
He not, he's applying. That we just had, we're just at that stage, we just wanna make you aware of that.
You got one that's applying for Grand County as well?
We have one that applied for Grand County for, Deputy Hager, how we applied, he just informed me, end of last week, they'd apply for an investigator's position, that they had available there. I don't know that, I, I don't know that he aligns with the requirements that they have for that, but then again, you know, it's the same issues that we've had, sometimes you, sometimes you have to go with what you have and find a way to make it work, so. So I just want you to be aware that if anything comes up with, with both processes, I'll make sure to let you know. And that's all I have.
You visited briefly last week about storage.
Oh.
Did you get a chance to research that, or?
I, I haven't.
Okay.
I contacted Dennis last week. Cody Volness has been taking over some of the duties from, from Curtis. He's doing all the maintenance duties on Fridays and most Mondays now as well, as Curtis takes some of his time taken down. He was asking about cold storage, just, uh. We, the, the maintenance department has that garage out there that they use for the snow blower and the, the lawn mower and those kinds of things. And it makes it difficult to get all the stuff in there that we need, as well as, we've started to store quite a bit of things when it comes to disinfectant, and lights, and toilet paper, and things like that. So we're looking at the possibility of, of finding someplace to store some of those items that we're not needing on a regular basis. When I say snow blower, we obviously need that in the winter, but the lawn mower doesn't need to be in there taking up space. We also have a scissor lift that's in our Sallyport area, that's used very infrequently, but to get to the lights that they need to, and all those, and those cells, they need that to be up there. So, I was just asking about the possibility of either storing some of the stuff here in one of the underground garages in the old jail. And I just need to talk to, uh.
To Doug?
To Doug about how we can leave that.
But I also was thinking, the jail administrator had talked about sending records to maybe peer people. What about using our jail?
Yeah.
Or even a cell, which you can probably have a lot. I mean, I don't know, but I mean, rather than sending, you said you had to keep them forty years or something?
Uh, that's what, that's what I'm leaning towards. So if, if that's a possibility, I've never been in there, I don't know what kind of, I, I don't know what's, what's all in there. That could definitely be a possibility for us, so.
Yeah, we talked about it every year, I have rum and seal and everything over there, we, some of them strip off the cells and.
Is there a lot of stuff in there?
There's a fair lot of stuff in there. It's, it's basically on staff before you go to the dump.
There's a lot of.
It could have gone to the dump.
Maybe this summer, we, yeah, just set up a room and say.
Yeah, just open the doors and say, give me a few.
First, we need to include the share, because we went up to the jail and literally helped claim some of the back rooms and all that shit. Yeah, all the way there. This is my project.
Well, we might have, there, there may be some sur, I don't know how, what that, what that process looks like, the surplusing some of that equipment, is it?
We just have to declare it and then.
And then we can have something like that? Because I think we have some, we have some old equipment that we could possibly get out of our storage area, that we could add to that as well. So that's something we can definitely.
Let's work on that for the spring, summer, and winter.
Okay, quickly, the kind of deal where you just get someone to come in, like we did here, they come in and they walk through and they just, but the whole thing, you know? There's, there's metal in there, there's, uh, there's a lot of garbage in there, there's a whole bunch of boots and stuff over there. Huh? Yeah, you can probably, I mean, there are the shoes, there are the keys, these federal guys go over and they just, they leave their shoes in there, and they're like, I don't know, twenty, thirty pair of boots, they're all over there.
Really?
Yeah, they're, they're, if they've been taken out of their sense, I mean, that was.
Martin and Tyler, maybe his long-range goal would be to have, for example, to store up seasonal equipment out there.
We talked about that when we first built the jail, I mean, we're always gonna put this separate garage on the property by the jail. See, like, our funds never.
Yeah, when you start to just build out, but.
If we were here around to doing something in the highway department, maybe you could make a little piece out of that new shed, and have some storage for the guys that are just across the road, and we'd have a right across the way there.
That's all I have, I don't.
So, um, this first page here that we, that I was saying about, is a break on what we've got over the last two years to complete this, like, three years now, to complete the project for the radio upgrade for B twenty-five compatibility, and for the new software that we have to get. So we've gotten around one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six thousand from two different grants for that. And we're still kind of waiting to get some reimbursement on those. The next part is the nine-one-one target funding money that we have gotten, and we use that to get the appropriate rate that I showed you in the flip chart for the medical dispatching. With that, there was a portion of it, so kind of backtracking to what we had talked about, where we said we were gonna do the five-year maintenance plan, and then it came down to about ten thousand. The state actually didn't bring back correct quote with them, so I didn't get approved that round, which actually benefited us a little bit, because we ended up having another expense that came up with this. And that was an interface software program for the, actual software that we're buying. It has to work into our computer dispatch. So that is that quote that's on that back page, that fifteen thousand. So instead of paying for the ten thousand for the five-year maintenance, and we should transfer that over and just pay for that fifteen thousand, because we have about four thousand left. So, it pays for about fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-six of that total from that fifteen. So I'm wondering if we'd be able to cover the remainder of that, seeing as that's what would be left after that grant money. You can see that on that second page, that bottom chart kind of shows what we would have left to pay out of that whole project would be about two thousand sixty-one, that everything else would be covered. And the laptop, they said that they need to have an extra computer that's basically for doing call review, being all that software put out there. And if we could be able to get one with the right specs for around four hundred. And that can also kind of dual as a emergency management laptop as well. We can have that outfitted with the server program and everything that we need to, we can script that into the LCJ, like, if I have to relocate. And then the top part is the whole service contract and lots, which everything seems to have, but that's for the appropriate and for the interface, which I think that that's, I think it's gonna be amazing. I'm sure it's possible when it comes to doing medical instructions over the phone to anybody, you know, they back to one hundred percent plus, we have a detailed log of what was said and why it was said. But it's, it'd be an awesome tool, but there's a little bit of expense that comes along with it.
Any questions about that at all? I'm just curious, on the first page, as we've been talking, so would owner be saved for reimbursement for that?
So, we have, all of this stuff has already been awarded, and the reason why we haven't gotten all of the invoices in is, there was an influx of people that purchased radios for N D P twenty-five compatibility upgrades, with this, you know, Homeland Security, I hope it's nine-one-one project funding. So a lot of the two-way radio, they were backed up with their order, and so we were still waiting, and they finally just came in, I just got word on Friday that they came in. So then they're waiting for programming, so until we get those bills, we can't pay them and then get reimbursed.
Okay.
So that's what we're currently on, is getting the pay invoices to get the reimbursement from Homeland Security, but these have all been awarded and they're, you know, for sure things, so it's just, we're just waiting on the paperwork, but. So are you guys okay with going forward with, so the one part of this that I gotta ask you about is this server interface. So that total bill at fifteen thousand, we need that in order to move forward with the actual project, to get it moving, to get the programming done, to get the software installed, done. But the state isn't meeting again with the nine-one-one board to approve the project, which it already has, and hopefully that that, you know, this falls right in line with it, there's no problem with this. But we have to wait until around the end of March till they meet again to get the flow on it. Are you guys okay with moving forward with adding this interface and then just getting reimbursed for it?
I think. Did you say sixteen thousand or sixteen hundred?
Uh, it's six, will be fifteen thousand, well, it's on the very last page, fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven is gonna be for that interface. So we've got fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-six. That was left in our nine-one-one project funding that the state gave us, so we're just gonna, instead of paying for the five-year maintenance, you know, get ahead on that, we'll just use this to come up and actually finish this process and then we'll look at maintenance. She did say, the nine-one-one coordinator stated that there may be surplus, and if there is, we can use that money to cover anything that we've recovered in expenses. We might still be getting that back at the end of it.
Okay, I can move forward without it. I'll pay an hour later, I guess. We'll pay an hour later, I guess.
That your motion to approve the expenses?
Sure. It is a need.
Um, two other little things. So we do have our chairs. They worked everywhere else, but in this batch we had a couple issues. And I think that's just one because they are twenty-four seven heavy duty chair when you've got everybody sitting on them. Two of them had the, uh, mechanisms go out in them, but I did contact the company to have sent you the ones. Uh, Dr. Boating's going to put those in. Um, but I'm wondering if we don't want, instead of being able to that heavy repurpose those as the extras replace any that do break in the future? And maybe look at getting two a little bit lighter just for this batch?
What would you pay a little bit, remember, this ballpark?
I think it's about a hundred and fifty.
Which is pretty, pretty reasonable chair.
Yeah, and they seem to be working elsewhere else. I mean, they're not sitting in on, like I said, the kind of twenty-four seven use chair, but this batch they're, they're getting hit pretty hard. So, um, and if we're gonna have problems keeping them there. But you think about the deputy's room, you know, reception. It's a little bit easier to use them there than... In this batch, but... And I think we probably could have a little bit better, you know, heavy duty, you know, high weight quality. If that one, I mean, three hundred, I think we'd be fine.
Do you want two in there or three in there?
Just, I think we only need two. I could bring an extra one up there. Um, so that one seems to be working fine. I think we just need two for the council. And then use an extra one for, for mine, but, um... And the other thing is we do have a reimbursement from Amazon that came in for, it was around three hundred dollars because we had a, it shouldn't have was lost, but then it did get delivered. So they let us keep the product and get reimbursement. So that is five, five gallons of disinfectant. So, um, I, when we got plenty of disinfectant there too, I don't know if you guys need anything up here, but we do have...
The guns or whatever?
No, it's just for kids' cleaning disinfectant.
Oh.
So if you guys...
Where are you getting it from?
It was from Zep cleaners, but it was an Amazon store.
Why don't, um, visit with our emergency manager?
Okay.
Because I think he has access to some gallon stuff.
Yeah. And we could have...
Nothing?
But, um, another thing is we do have, I did bulk up on disinfectant wipes because we bulked a lot of those and there's times where it's really hard to get them. And I got them for the cheapest I could get them, you know, for three pack for eight bucks. We got a lot of those. I don't know if you guys end up needing more. We do have a stock and you can always just figure that out later. But we do have plenty of the guys we need in. Okay.
Sounds good. Do you need, um, motion to approve the purchase of chairs?
If you guys were buying that...
That's in motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
And do maybe you're on a three hundred book for that?
I think whatever you need to, then they give you reasonable chair, right? Right?
Um, I mean, you have two people going between you and you at the month. Uh, it's not like a monthly, it's, um... It's gonna be Samantha Bloom and Kate LeFarner are the attending to class out of here. They restarted that backup. But they will already have part of their children done, so I think they might only be going a part of the track. Because they'll have their NCIC and their EMD done in advance, so.
I just asked this one in front of Tyler, but did we send a bill to the city for the 911 January dispatch?
No, because you guys talked about it.
Okay, but I mean, okay, but we should be, right? And can we also send February? Then we should be billing the service in advance of, of the month, correct? I don't want to mess up what you got going on, so I just...
I, I didn't know. I, I looked at my thing and I thought, well, I...
But I think we decided we, we should chart the, the new rate. We should go with the old rate.
The old rate and send two bills?
One for January and one for February. I mean, I, I don't want to be unreasonable. I was opening last week with them. I don't, I don't see a problem with that. For the old rate, which is forty-one, five, by like twelve, I guess. For both the January and February, then if it's not resolved by, by the end of February, we should be building a warrant and we'll just start, just start the new contract when, when we get there. Yeah, go three years ago, okay? From that date, that's, that's what I would do with it. Stuff on what you do with that.
I just have one question. We today surplus vehicles. Do you still want that two thousand seven Chevy?
Uh... I'm gonna say no. Wow.
Well, it wasn't much of a bid. We got five hundred or sixty-three dollars for what we did. Yeah.
Come and get it. Let's put it that way.
Let, let me, let me double check with the jail staff and see if, if they think it would be a useful for them to have it. Um, because it's gonna be more, more on them. We have, we have two vehicles that are, one needs to be taken to Twin Valley and see if, if they can do the fix on it that it needs. And then we would have three transport vehicles. So that already has a cage in it. So that would be the useful thing. That would be the one, that's the one drawback to, to the haul that I could see is it not having a cage. It just limits, it just limits what we can use it for. But I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna say no that we... But so, let me double check with the jail administrator and see if he thinks that it would be useful to have it for, for some of the runs that some of the other officers get sent out on to do gather medications and things like that.
Would you transport prisoners to different facilities? Are they handcuffed?
Yes.
Behind the back?
Handcuffed in, handcuffed in front, handcuffed around, they're tucked by ankle restraints, and those restraints are connected, yeah. Yeah, I don't know. That, that, yeah, executive session.
The last thing I was gonna mention, if you, if you need help negotiating a settlement...
Send me that, okay?
Vehicle, just let me know.
Okay.
I can help you with that.
Excellent.
There are motions for executive session by pay, second, third, and on favor, signify the settlement.
Aye.
Please, please.
This personnel?
To the section.
Okay, your time. Where are you getting it? Well, I, I assume that's, well, Sanford's one in the northeast corner of South Dakota. You're the officer, so... Yeah, yeah. I mean, they're the one that taken the decision, I guess, I would have told them so. But they're only getting, I think, up to 100 doses a week so far. Yeah, I see South Dakota just went from, I think, picked up another 1800 a, a week there.
What's that, Jim?
Yeah, that's, well, it's our... Especially once, once they're in, they're isolated, they don't have some different kind of business out there.
Ben can serve us on?
Yeah, I guess the more you can talk about it, it's a good deal. Especially when you figure there's, you know, 50, 50 prisoners in there that they all... They did, or did?
I do more, yeah, I can.
I saw a new photograph, I told that Russian dissident guy that's poisoned and now he's been in jail, he's, uh, Russian court detention, two years in prison.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you think you should let Lynn know that I'm using this or auditor?
He never had a problem with it.
Well, okay.
As long, as long as you keep it with you. When you leave, we'll talk.
You mean the thief?
No, signature.
Oh, your signature. As long as, you know, as long as you take it with you.
Uh, do we have to get back to this lady, her son?
Oh, right on what we decided there, you know. You want me to make the phone call?
Yeah.
All right. Motion by commissioners as to pay bills. Is there a second to that? Tom, thank you. On favor, sign for 500, please, period. Uh, we circulated the VSO report for the month of January and the register of deeds income report for the month of January. What else do we have, Tom? Oh, yeah, goodness sakes, yeah, I still...
Did we ever get the liquor license back?
You know, I think that's an addendum to, to this and I don't know that we submitted it to them for their approval. That's, that's, we're, we're making, uh, we're making the, uh, we're making the rules on that one. And the condition was in Brown County, it was modeled, it was modeled a lot after that and then tweaked later on about using an outside source. We could do the barending and, uh...
That's where LST agree that LST, I mean, that show by by the terms of the liquor use policy, a conflict, conflict which is attached, but it isn't that.
It's not attached.
So maybe we have, you know, I thought that's what LST assumed.
I, I was thinking more of the insurance that was there, their whole, uh...
Which they grant this, Ron, they were looking at making an old MOU. You know, but this is, this is correct. I think it's excellent, other than your point on the liquor license and I...
You know, she's going after that liquor use? Can you grab the liquor use policy with the 4H further? You mentioned that one page, huh? This is what we've been using, you know, a lot. Tom, take a look at that, she was...
Well, we can look at the familiar things.
Yeah, that's what they use.
Well, we have, we have some more narrative, uh...
Do you want the one that's modeled after Brown County?
Yeah, yeah, we had edited it down and stuff.
Why can't you copy something?
We changed it to...
Do you want to have that again, or is it? You know, we...
Now that we've got that. Gonna take a quick break?
I'm hungry, cause it's needed then.
I'm not sure what, what he's referring to as far as the liquor.
Well, we marked up that one from Brown County, I thought.
Do you have that one from Brown County?
There's Brown County on this.
Oh, no, we don't have the, the edited down one. I think it was saved on your computer, if I remember right.
Or the actual liquor license, liquor thing?
Or, I think, I think it was this Brown County one. They started taking, taking that Brown County out, that Robert County in. Changing it around to...
And that's the liquor ones, that's not this agreement. That's not the...
Not the one that we have.
That's not the...
The liquor, liquor use.
So why would it open?
Well, I don't want to, it's confusing because...
Is that part of the lease agreement between the 4H leaders and the, and the renter?
No, we have something. That was between the county and first reader.
Yeah, and that's what you have here, right? This is between Brown County and the 4H leaders.
Yes, but also, there's supposed to be a liquor use policy, copy of that.
And maybe, maybe that's what, maybe that's what we're calling, yes.
Is that what we ended up with on the whole thing?
Yeah, that's what they, that's...
Because what we have here, these are, they're Brown County, lease agreement, which is kind of modeled, and then their back page is here, I'll call it use primarily. And I think that's maybe what we're...
Okay, that's what we ended up with on the, on the whole thing.
Cause that's, that's what we get when, you know, when they... When they do rent it out and they have rented it out.
To do a little safety act, they have so much dollars worth of insurance and...
Yeah, they, they have, uh, they have a, a form that they fill out for the third party. That binds that party to liability.
That's, that's what I was thinking. That's what we, them understand.
Yeah, and they, and they have actually...
This is copy of lease between them, 4H and the thing.
They would sort of print it down in the past. They don't have...
Couldn't get that moving out of policy.
They didn't have homeowners insurance and they, they were a renter and they didn't have a renter policy that's protected up from... I wonder if that wording should be referring to... But it is, it is misleading.
That, that, this...
What they have out there should be, should probably be attached to this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Their, their, uh, they're not a renter offering that, which...
So you want me to get that from Jill?
Yeah, for the local renters agreement and, and the liquor license, it's not part of it.
Right.
Their lease between the 4H and the leasee is not there and then that calls the permission form should also be attached.
Yeah.
And that's why that...
I think it's good, yeah.
Yep.
Didn't, didn't they send all that down to 4H headquarters someplace and they looked at it?
They held it for quite some time. You know, if it might be a, a true...
I have another question. As to a moving budgets and talking, I thought they had requested that the extension budget and the 4H budget, county fair thing, county fair and the extension all be combined. Rather than having the county fair, the extension and 4H building.
I think there was two that Tracy wanted combined.
Yeah, those were the two.
The one that preferred that they wouldn't be, but they would not be combined.
But I think they wanted to have three separate ones.
It is on, when we do the annual report, it's separate. It's kinda hard to start, I, I guess I just assume we keep it the way it is right now.
The annual report, so is that something you make up or is it a board that is given to them?
That's come out of the state.
Okay. All right, good enough, I would just...
I think we, I think we just need to keep those separate.
Okay, all right.
I don't know what to, why it's a, would be, uh, would be older.
Well, I can, well, Jill just talked to me my day and she said it's like, okay, I go out to, like, the Dollar Store, okay? And I maybe get this for extension and I maybe need this for, you know, uh, county fair, you know, and it's hard to keep it separate.
Oh, okay.
That was the only reason.
They, they had mentioned that to me too, that it's hard for them to, to tell which, which fund to take it or to bill it to or to pay off and that sort of thing, but...
I don't know, just like, we have, you know, stuff at the Dollar General and part of it's for the jail and part of it's for the sheriff's office, I guess.
What else is there? I don't think you're online, Jason.
What?
I don't think you're online, are you?
I should be.
Your line isn't working. Her bot done anyway. Motion to the jury. Hey! Reese to the door. Is there a second? Tom, thank you. All the papers, they can probably say it. Another week with, by, yep. Another week in paradise.
Oh, that's changed, that's like, took a smother.
I'm glad.
Yeah, now these six o'clock, it's getting still white out, it's getting kinda nice, it's gonna get that damn cold weather this weekend.
This livestream was brought to you by First Savings Bank of Sisseton, where your time is valuable, so use our online banking. Still some service with Marathon Fuels in Sisseton, Dakota Pond and Thrift, for all your pond and thrift needs, so in Sisseton. Countryside Inn, assistance to living and memory care of Ross Salt, where your family is our family. And Sisseton Courier, where we do more than just the newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.